We'd like to say good evening to everyone. Thank you all so much for coming out, showing your cares and your concerns for the city of Greensboro. At this moment, as always, we'll open up our meeting with prayer, asking that Councilman Moore would pray us in on this evening. This is part of our service that you wish not to participate in, we ask now that you dismiss yourself. If not, we ask Councilman Moore to go ahead and lead us in prayer.
Eternal Father who in heaven, master, we thank you once again for being able to assemble in your presence, master. And Father God, I pray for this governing body, master, I pray that you would give us the fortitude and the strength, master, to represent your people as we represent you as well, my Lord. And Father God, I just pray right now that minds and hearts will be receptive here tonight, Lord God. And I pray that we will do the business of this, your city, the city that you've blessed us with to help govern. We ask for these blessings in our son Christ Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. City manager, I ask that you, the minutes will reflect that everyone is present on tonight.
Yes, sir.
Brings us down to number three on our general approval of our March 6, 2023 call meeting minutes. Council, I give you time to read over those if you haven't done so. And once you've read over those minutes, asking that you would raise your right hand, signifying that you're ready to vote. I entertain a motion to accept the March 6, 2023 call meeting minutes.
Motion to accept?
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much for unanimous decision. Number four, approval of March 6, 2023 regular session minutes. Council, I give you time to read over those, once you've done so, ask that you would raise your hand, signifying that you're ready for those as well. Everybody ready? Entertain a motion to accept the March 6, 2023 regular session minutes?
Motion to accept? Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much, unanimous decision. Brings us down to number five, approval of March 6, 2023 executive session minutes. And council, I don't have a hard copy, and I don't think you all have hard copies either. So, once you've read over those executive session minutes, I ask that you would also raise your right hand, signifying that you're ready. Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes of March 6, 2023.
Motion to accept?
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you all so much. Number six, it's a supervising report by Mr. Marcus Cunningham of the water, wastewater plant.
Good afternoon. I'll be brief and give you guys a brief update and some overviews of what's going on at the treatment plant. We started our sour testing, which is a sludge sample that we normally do semi-annual. But we're having to do those quarterly now because we're expected to go over our, a certain threshold set by the federal, by EPA and EPD. We started that because of the expected pond job that we're hoping to get done here in a few months. The biosolids report that, that's listed on there from 2022 is a sludge data, the sludge data that's collected and was packaged together and reported to both federal and state regulatory agencies, the EPA and EPD. That was done in conjunction with the information that we have at the treatment plant. It was done by us and the engineer, Mike Ledzek. Soil samples, soil testing that we've done at the treatment plant, it was taken, some samples were taken from the LAS site, which is our land application site at the treatment plant where we discharge our effluent to, as well as our, our land application site for where we haul our sludge to. Our quarterly testing is just our regular testing at the plant. I just finished that up today. That's due to be submitted in our monthly report, that's due on the 15th of every month that we, what I did today has to be reported the following month, which is the month, reported in the month of April. Like I said, the grit classifier that y'all approved for us to get, it is on order, the, I spoke to the salesman. I think it was last week I did speak to him. And he's supposed to come by the treatment plant and take a look at the current system that we have, so he can retrofit the new one, so we can make the installation process as easy as possible. Right now, that system is out. We have, we're not be able to use it because, you know, that system is pretty much beyond repair. The pond job that we, that I spoke about earlier, the guy from Bionomic Solutions, he came by on March 6. He came by the facility to look at, at the treatment plant for staging purposes where, you know, so they determine where they would put their equipment, how they would dredge the sludge out of the pond, and we took him to the land application site. We're looking to work with the property owner so we can make sure that he's happy as well as the city's happy, everybody. Everybody's covered, so we're, the, the job is supposed to start, I think, towards the later part of April, first part of May. We're constantly replacing and repairing spray heads in the land application site. It's something that we continuously have to, have to do, and we have to keep, you know, all those records of maintenance on file for when we're audited by EPD. The industrial annual report is something that I'm currently working on now, I'm hoping to be through with it by the end of the week. It's due on the 31st. It's basically the, all the information from three industrial users in the city. We have to compile all this information from testing to our inspections and, and all of their sampling results. All of that has to be compiled and a report submitted to both EPA and EPD. The spray field cleanup is something that we've yet to do. It's the next bigger item on the list from us at the treatment plant after the industrial report is done. Normally, we could, would like to have the great equipment there, which is a tractor with a loader on the front, so we can kind of do this, we can keep up, keep pace with, you know, when we have downed trees and stuff like that. We can be able to keep up with it instead of doing a heavy annual clean during this time of year. We, at the treatment plant, we were looking for an operator, a person that is seriously capable of getting a class three license, or somebody that can drive the pump truck. Really, we need both. We also need, like I just mentioned before, a tractor for spray field maintenance. It, like I said, it's just for us to be able to stay ahead, keeping the laterals clean where our spray fields are in the land application site. And on the lastly is a pickup truck, because the old vehicles that we have at the treatment plant, they're getting to the point where they're, you're spending, you would spend more money in them than they're really worth. So, it's, we will need to look, start looking for something that's a little bit more up to date, so we won't have to be spending so much money in maintenance. That all, that's all I have for you this afternoon.
Thank you so much, Mr. Cunningham. City manager, we ask that you would, you would post a job for operator for our water waste plant, and one of the, and the requirements being that that individual will be able to get certified as well as drive the vehicle. And that vehicle is manual, if I'm not mistaken.
The sludge truck is manual.
Spray truck is manual, also able to drive a manual vehicle.
Okay.
I don't have any more questions. I thank you so much for this detailed report. Councilman Moore, do you have anything?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Anything else coming from the council this time?
I have one question, Mr. Mayor. You, Mr. Cunningham, thank you for your job, which you do really well. You have on here, you're having to replace and repair spray heads. How many spray heads are we talking about?
Right now, it's, it's just shy of a thousand that we have back there. It's over, our spray field is just over a hundred acres. It's kind of broken up into nine different fields, so we can control the flow daily. So, we won't overly saturate one area. And, you know, we have problems, like when it gets cold, they'll freeze and then break. And the ones that we can repair, we will repair, but sometimes we have to buy new ones, because the ones that are, that we're replacing are beyond repair. So, that's just something that we have to do just for maintenance issues, you know, at the treatment plant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Any more questions? No more questions. Thank you so much, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you.
Brings us down to number seven, Ms. Lily Tripp.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I want to thank you for questioning me on the agenda, I hope you can hear me. I wanted to address a concern I have, and it was some other people here last time we didn't get a chance to talk. But I want to get ahead of a situation that's occurring and has been reoccurring for several years over at Adrian Circle in the city of Greensboro. The, there is a creek that runs from the top side of the Beezy Road down Adrian Drive, all the way from 1040 to 1080. And we have been enduring flooding there for several years. The, when it flood, when it rains, and it rains more than one day or more, it just bags up to the door, go up above the air conditioning unit. And the last time, the water came through the heat and air vents in the floor into the house. So, what I'm trying to do now is get ahead of this, because I don't have anyone to keep replacing floors. Sydney is dead. I need to be able to get, get control of this now. The floors I had replaced last week was a result of the flooding that's going on. And so, I'm, along with the other people that live down that street, are interested in finding out what can be done to stop the flooding and get some relief. I do know that once it stops up, up past my house, there's a little area Tony Jack Roland used to go into and kind of do something to, to keep the water flowing, but that's not happening now. And once it starts raining, I was afraid last week, it was gonna, you could see the waters, it stands back there. But it creates insects, creates snakes, creates everything. And, and so, we're wanting to see if you all could get something done before it floods again. I cannot insure my property again now. I've had two vehicles that have been paid for by insurance companies, but I cannot get my heat and air units replaced anymore because of that area being, I don't think it's a flood zone, I don't know what you want to call it. But at this point, I do know that I'm trying to put you all on notice that something needs to be done to address it prior to another large flood. I think if we can do control prior to and, and try to be proactive instead of reacting, then we might be able to get somewhere. That was my first thing that I wanted to bring. Secondly, I want to thank the, Mr. Postel and the city for working with me. I think I, I hope by tomorrow, when I go to pay my bills, they are actually straightened out. But I want to address this because I have a concern about the elderly people in the city, and this is my last point. The water bill system that you all have, the meters are supposed to notify you or signal that there is a leak. And, and maybe the city could reach out to you, say, "Look, we see a, a, a large amount of gallons being used. Please have your water checked," or whatever. Well, that is not working, that's not happening, because the only way I know I have a leak is when I get my water bill. Well, from October to, to now, I've had my water bills become very, very high because I'm not aware of a leak. I don't have any way of finding out until I get the water bill. So, I went in and I thanked the mayor and Mr. Postel for getting the first water bill adjusted. But then during the freeze and later on, there was a water bill that got up to like $4,000. And I hate to bother the mayor, I hate to call different ones trying to seek help, because obviously, there is not a concrete system. I know the system that's there now allows for you to have the water adjusted by taking off the water and leaving the sewage. With my water bill is $4,000, and my, and, and the water is 2,000 of that forward, that leaves me with 2,000, which is what has happened to me a couple of times. And so, I think that that is a little astronomical. I don't know too many cities that's, that has a water and sewage being equal. I don't know how that works, but I do know that there are a lot of cities, and I've called and checked, that are doing adjustments based on the average. If your bill, and, and my bills usually run 50/80, 50/80, I'm not, I'm very cautious about water bills. And I have several properties here in the city of Greensboro. So, 50/80 is when you're not using a lot of water, you may not even get to 50/80, but that's the minimum. And so, when you get a water bill that's really, really large, and you're splitting it 50/50, the sewage is the same as the water, it can become a burden. That can not only be for me. Yes, I'm able to pay, but I don't, I'm not frugal. Just because you can pay something doesn't mean you, you pay it. I'm trying to get it so that you all will contemplate getting a system where, when I go in and those are your ladies, and I, I say to them that this is what has happened, you see the water bill, and I want to get things adjusted, because I don't think all the water goes through the sewer. No, I don't believe that, you can't make me think that, because the water that was running from my property, from the house, it was behind a wall. God knows, it took me two months to find it and to fix it, because each time I was thinking, and my brother was thinking, that it had, you know, we fixed this leak and it has to be coming from somewhere. Long story short, it was behind the wall, we had to tear the wall out, the blocks out, to get to it. So, if someone else, elderly, has a water leak and don't know it, and then by the time the bill comes out, and their bill is 500, and the water bill is adjusted at, at the, at the current system that you all have in effect, that means that they are going to have to pay 250, and the 250 is forgiven. Well, they may not have 250, when the water bill is used to be in 50/80 for just a single person. So, what I'm saying is, there needs to be a system developed where the young ladies that works there in the front can utilize it without me having to plead with the city council, the mayor, and everyone else to help me get my bill situated, because I think the, the method is unfair. So, I ask you all to think of that and work towards that, and certainly work towards helping us get ahead of a flood that's going to come soon, I feel it in my spirit. And I'm just hoping that you all will get, get ahead of it, because I don't know how many more flows I can replace with this help that's running around here in Greensboro. And I don't know how many more units I'm, I can replace out of pocket. So, please, help do something on Adrian Circle and do something consistent for the city.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tripp. Mayor? Is any question coming from the council? No questions coming from the council.
Thank you all for allowing me to come, I feel so.
Council, before you, you have the ordinance that was given to us about south, the regulations of South Main Street. This will be the second reading of this ordinance, amending the regulations of South Main Street, overlay district. I ask this time, have you, have you had time to read over this? If you haven't, or if you have, then attorney is able to answer any questions. If there are no questions, then I will entertain a motion to accept the regulations and the amending of our overlay district.
One question, Mr. Attorney. Anything change from the first reading?
We did have one slight change. The, after talking with your current zoning administrator, he asked to remove some of the regulations regarding public comment. Those would come in the city council portion, if there was a, someone who had a problem with it or anything like that. But otherwise, it's the same. And just to, just to give a little information about this proposal, essentially, right now, you have a body that is made up of staff that's having to review this. It would be a lot faster and a lot, give a lot more flexibility to your staff if we just put this at a staff level. Not only will it allow them to respond faster, but it also would allow them to actually drill down into the specific regulations, and we can be a little bit more targeted with what we're doing. Prior to this, we've run into some issues with scheduling, we've run into some problems with time when someone makes a request. So, the big takeaway, though, is the city council still remains the ultimate decision maker if it got up to your all's mind.
Any more questions for our city attorney? No questions. I entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept?
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Unanimous decision. Thank you so much. Brings us down to number nine. City, city manager, I would like to say, if you can contact the Army Corps of Engineers to see if we can do some cleaning to that creek down in Adrian Circle. That way, we can, we can do our due diligence for the citizens of Greensboro by doing what we can or what they will allow us to do, if they will allow us to do anything. At your earliest convenience. Also, council, it was brought up last meeting about our water, water tank cleaning. And I'm, I'm just, we're going to have a meeting on this a little later on. But that amount that was said, well, I think, Mr. Ladd said about 80,000. It's, it's about 1.2 million for the next eight years, but it'll be broke down. So, I want to put that on your plate. It's, it's a little bit more than 80,000. Any unfinished business for you, Councilman Moore? City manager, any unfinished business for you?
Yes, sir. I'd like to propose that on the week of April the 3rd, that we do that as our spring cleaning pickup day.
April 3rd?
Yes. Actually, it would just be that Monday. The citizens are only allowed to put out the refuse and whatnot on the Monday. And then we spend the rest of the week picking it up, but we can't have a complete cycle of everybody getting it picked up and then putting out more. So, we limit it, we limit them to have it out by Monday morning, of the 3rd. So, you're saying the 3rd will be the last day that they can put stuff out?
Correct.
Okay. Actually, it'd be the 2nd. It needs to be out by Monday morning.
Need to be out by, by Monday morning?
Yeah.
Council, you've heard requests coming from our city manager for April 3rd to be our cleanup day. Entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept?
Second.
It's been second. Any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Who was the second? Who did the second? Who did the second?
Neither. City attorney, any unfinished business?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Miller, any unfinished business?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers, any unfinished business?
Yes, I have one. March 6, we voted to purchase the police car, it was a better one.
We have not yet signed any documents saying that we will go purchase, uh, police cars. What we did on March 6, was you guys gave me and the city manager authorization to sign for any vehicles, uh, in the near future.
Did you what now? To sign in the near future?
Mm-hmm.
So, you need a date?
There was not a specific date in that motion, so we left it open.
So, now we need a date to sign?
No, you don't need one now, because you've already made the motion.
So, what are, what are we doing? Is it waiting?
Yes, we, 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 we.
You all the staff?
We're waiting on the right time to purchase them.
Okay.
Anything for you, Councilman Smith?
Uh, no, sir, I can wait, where I could go in an old business, could be new business. Uh, do we have, do we keep up with the manhole and the tops that's on the manhole? Because I, I've been getting phone calls, different citizens with manholes on their property.
Anyone in particular?
Um, I'll get you the addresses, but the reason I say and bring it up, I would like for, to get the people that's in control, in charge of that, to go out to East Manhole and see that we have the addresses to them, to make sure that the tops is on them. Because I think, man, uh, Mr. Moore was together, uh, one day, and we call you, and we went out and got that situated, and then we had one on the railroad. Uh, it's two back on, going back down by the high school, I'll get you the exact address, but I went down, Sarah, the one of them is about six feet deep with no top, and the other, I'll get you the exact address, uh, after the meeting. But the parents called me, and I went to their property, and both, uh, property have kids, little kids. So, we need to try to get on top of that, not just the old two, but try to get someone to go out and look at each manhole that we got, and make sure that it's a top and cover over, so we won't have any accidents or anything that will happen to any of our citizens. Thank you.
Anything for you, Councilman Neil?
No, sir.
Brings us down to number 10, which is new business. We need to go in the executive session to discuss one personnel matter. Councilman Moore, anything from you?
Uh, nothing, Mr. Mayor.
City manager, anything from you?
No, sir.
City attorney?
No, Mr. Mayor. Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Rivers? Councilman Smith?
No, sir.
Councilman Neil?
No, sir.
All right, brings us down to number 11, public comments. Public comments are held to all the items that are on the agenda. Have you signed up for public comment? There, there's also, there's a signup sheet that you have to sign at the beginning of the meeting. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, with me.
With city manager? Yes, ma'am, because you haven't signed up. Thank you so much. I ask now, uh, for a motion to go in the executive session.
Motion to go in the executive session?
It's been second. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you so much. If you all will give us just a moment while we go into executive session.